Town Council candidate portion of our forum. I'd like to remind you, please, be careful and attentive while people are speaking. Keep your phones down and off, and listen respectfully. We've got a lot of candidates and a lot of questions. Let's zoom along. We're going to start with a four-minute opening statement, starting with LaShawna Kaiser.
Hello, as most of you know, I am LaShawna Kaiser. I'm running for town council. I am a lifelong resident of Mount Air. I follow you. I want to do my best for our town. I am willing to do my best to help our town grow, create a safer place for our children, search for their children. I have a daughter in kindergarten school. I work at Mid-Symonory. I have not the privilege to explain the problems of our town residents and the homeless and all who live there. My vision for Mount Air is to help get through, work with the mayor to bring some things that would benefit the town and our children. Hopefully, another gas station, a lady, but the possibilities are endless. With the good with the people, we can accomplish anything, including all of it together.
Excuse me, but I'd like to remind the candidates to play like Mick Jagger. Eat the microphone.
I want to take this time to, first of all, before I introduce our candidate here, just tell you guys, every time you guys come to a small town, you guys always have the best munchies. I tell you, that's kind of great. I've been loving standing back there. I'm here to introduce Aurora Reese because what Mount Air needs is someone that's a forward thinker, someone that is proactive, someone that is going to be willing to go out and seek resolutions to the issues that are coming up. This lady comes with tremendous amount of experience. She's not a politician, but she has her heart in Toance County, and she has her heart in Mount Air. And as with a distinct pleasure that I introduce, Aurora Reese.
Thank you. Welcome, Peter Neth though, council members and citizens of Mount Air. My name is Aurora Zamora, but most of you know me as Tuda. I am a nearly long-lived resident of Mount Air. I went to school here, graduated here, and have worked various jobs here in the surrounding towns. I currently work for the U.S. Department of Acupuncture as a program technician. I have done this for nearly five years. I have experience in the baking industry and have made knowledge in the farming and ranching industry, and have five years' experience in town government. I get asked all the time as to why I want to run for this position. I think there are several reasons, but I think the biggest reason is to make our town a better place. I know that this is a generic answer and probably one you have heard or will hear by my opponents today. I see that our town has many struggles, as far as tax base, infrastructure, crime, emergency service, and of course, job development. I don't think that these problems are unique to our town, but they are important to me because I live here. Most of my family lives here, my sons live here, and I hope someday they will raise their families here. I think we must do the things to encourage private businesses to either stay, expand, or develop here. There are several ways to do this. This could be a tax incentive, or better infrastructure, or even proper police protection. But we must always realize how important companies like Co-op, PMS Medical, PMN Science, B Street Market, United Business Bank, and the Shaffer Hotel, and other private businesses are to our community. We must always work to take care of them and encourage not only their stability, but their potential and success. Also, we must always recognize how important our federal agencies are. Our federal employees, I'm a federal employee myself, I realize how important these jobs and agencies are to our small town. The importance of Salinas is to, is, to Salinas to our town is unmatched, both from the job aspects, then from the tourism aspect. And then right within is the Forest Service, NRCS, Clod, Crystal Soil, Water Conservation District. And as a town councilor, I will be supportive of all these agencies and their mission. Their missions are not only important to our small town, but they all have national importance, and in some way, their success gives our small town a national exposure. Our school is a paramount to our survival as a town. As councillor, we must always work with the school board and administration to ensure the survival and success of our school and children in our school. And I think I went too long. All school, keep going. I have mentioned all these entities, but the most important part of our town is to our people. As a municipality, these are basic services we should expect and should be provided. But we must all understand that the basics are not free. We all need to do our part to ensure that they are provided and paid for. I want all of you as residents to know that I am here for you, I am here to fight for you, and as your councillor, I will always fight to make our quality of life as a citizen of our small town better. There is not one person in this town that is more important to the other. Whether you are five or eighty-five, you are all important to me, and I will work for each one of you. Thank you.
Excuse me, but I should have mentioned that when you have thirty seconds left in your time, don't hear the bell as a warning. You hear it twice, stop talking.
The number's ringing will be your thirty-second warning.
LaShawna.
I want to start out by saying good afternoon to the community, and good afternoon to the moderator, the candidates, and the council. I'm going to start by introducing myself. I am LaShawna Ashley Chavez. I'm thirty-two years young and a mother of five kids. I am the fifth generation of my family to work and reside here in Mount Air, and my kids are the sixth generation to be raised here. I was involved throughout school in 4H FFA, Business Professionals of America's speech and debate chair. I went to school for medical building and coding after I graduated. I am also taking online classes now. I was a stay-at-home mother for years and just recently gained part-time employment with the Mount Air School District. I also sit on the Estancia Valley Solid Waste Authority Board of Directors and have helped facilitate the Mount Air Resource Center since 2016. I am also a domestic violence advocate and survivor, and that's what brings me to now. The reason I am running, and it weighs heavily on me, would be because of my own experiences. They launched me into a new place and gave me opportunity to talk to people about their own situations. It became relatively clear when I took the time to listen to the community that they felt they were not being heard. And I know this feeling, and it bothered me. The way I see it is simple. If you see something that needs to be changed, go out and find a way to help change it, become involved, and that's what I'm trying to do. Us, this community, also the people from our surrounding communities that work, shop, play, and go to school here can do that together. We can work together to make a difference for the present and the future of Mount Air while keeping our past in thought. We can build this community into the thriving place it used to be while upgrading for our future. If we focus on our infrastructure and learn to maintain it, we can build a solid foundation for our town to sit on. We can upgrade our systems, fix our roads, keep up with the maintenance, which will ensure that Mount Air becomes a better place for our children to live and the kids that come after. We need to work together to make sure our police department can retain officers so that we can have the protection we all deserve at all times. And we need to maintain a solid EMS and fire team as well. Being that we are such a rural area, we need that, and it's vital. Drug prevention and rehabilitation resources and programs mostly focusing on our youth would be vital as well. Maybe together we can educate and start to help solve that problem. Working on curbing this problem, we can see a decrease in theft and other crime-related issues. We can build a source here in town for education that is available to all age groups and that can be sustained and continue to be effective. Let us demand accountability, not only for ourselves, but for those who work above us and for us. Together, we can bring awareness to issues that plague this community. Talking about it and brainstorming together, we can tackle these issues and try to make a change that can really stick. We need to involve our youth as well and get the rest of the community excited about being involved. Let us ensure that everyone is heard and that we reach all demographics. I want to work for you and for our kids and for the future of Mount Air. I want to see a change. We can work together to show people that this is a place to be, where they want to start a career, or raise their families, or even retire. We can start programs that will help all of us as a collective succeed. I'm grateful to have gotten this opportunity to introduce myself and some of my ideas, and I will make no promises. But I'm looking forward to working with you all, me sitting on the councillor mat. Thank you.
Brandon.
Hello. My name is Brandon Overhauser, and I'm running for town council. I've been here since May 7th. We moved out here as our thirteenth wedding anniversary present to ourselves. Three years ago, we actually came out and visited Goat Ranch, drove twenty-four hours straight, me and Herb, just switching seats, switching naps, and just fell in love with the state. A little bit of backstory on how I've grown up. Pretty much been taking care of myself since I was nine years old, ever since I built a trailer to go on the back of my bicycle and, you know, so I could go around my lawnmower and make some money. Was running the streets of Detroit at nine. By the time I was twelve, I was working in construction with my best friend's mom. Kind of wish I'd saved some of that money instead of blowing it on the things I did blow it on. At sixteen, I worked Burger King and Wendy's while at the same time going to school. And at seventeen, my dad, he had to take off in the middle of the night one night, so I ended up having to take care of myself there. Got lucky, I met my wife. I was a cocaine dealer when I met her. We had the same group of friends for four years. But I showed up to the parties, dropped stuff off, went home where it was safe, and she attended the college parties. She saved my life. I was headed down prison or death. It was just the way it was going to go, and she paid off the cocaine debt that I was in, moved me into her house, and the rest is history. By the time I was eighteen years old, I was a father of a beautiful little girl and already pursuing my dream of being a professional wrestler. I've spent my entire life doing stuff that people tell me I couldn't do. You know, I'm five thirty-five, one hundred and nothing pounds. I was told to be a professional wrestler. I'd have to get a lot bigger or do a lot of steroids. I did neither of it, and I got to wrestle for ten years. A lot of those guys on television, I know personally, as personal friends. Did get a world record out the deal, wrestled twelve hours straight. Wanted to quit in two hours, four hours, six hours, eight hours, but in ten hours, I was right there. I knew it was time to go. Moved to New Mexico over a little town called Antonito, Colorado, right there in the San Juan Mountains. Because a new Peter through Facebook, he answered a couple of the walls that I was interested in knowing about, sent me some pictures, and oh my goodness, we fell in love. The six months we've been out here, we've left town a total of three times, and that's for a one-part trip. All my money and all my income goes back into the town, back into the community. We are very happy here. The reason I am running for town council is disinterest. I've been to just about every meeting except for two the past month that I missed, and we had council folks that just, mine was elsewhere. Nothing wrong with that, we all got busy lives, but for me, in a small town like this, we need our councilmen wanting to do the job. So, do my head in there. I've got no political experience at all, but I do, I can learn how to be a politician. I can read very well, and I study a lot. I'm the kind of guy that when you, I can see two sides to every coin, even if it's not the side that I'm on. DARE program, DARE program, self-allowance roads, finding owners for the current businesses that are for sale, as well as businesses to come in that are agriculture, tech-based, indoor entertainment-based would be some things I'd like to see happen here. I love our town, the vibe it gives, I wouldn't want to take from that, but I do think that we can build upon that. Thank you all.
Jeremy Oliver.
Hello. Thank you all for coming today. My name is Jeremy Oliver, and I don't know if you all know me, but I'll give you a little history on my background. I'm not originally from Mount Air or New Mexico. I moved to New Mexico in 2006 when I was with the United States Air Force. I lived in Albuquerque for a few years before coming back to my wife's home of Mount Air, and I've been here for the last nine years and have loved it ever since. I recently finished my bachelor's degree in business management and just started pursuing my MBA in business with the government. I am the former manager of the 7-Eleven here in town. I've seen a lot of the larger bases. I left that position to be the finance director for Orange County where I am currently now. I feel the town is going in a good direction, and I believe it takes constant effort and new influences to keep it moving. The world changes every day, and we need new ideas every day. We need to continue to grow. If we don't continue getting these businesses to stay in town through different efforts, tax incentives, increasing our population, or at least keeping population, maintaining these businesses aren't going to be able to afford to stay in town, and will slowly close. We had dealt with that a few years ago when the grocery store went bankrupt, and it burdened everyone. And currently, over in Estancia, they still have no grocery store, and it's a constant burden on everyone in that town. So, I don't want to see that happen here again, and I want to make more efforts to create new businesses. New businesses means new taxes. New taxes means new revenue for the town, and we'll continue to grow and keep the town growing. With that in mind, it's hard for a new business to want to move into a town this small. There needs to be incentives such as the tax incentives that could possibly be looked at, create a more likely to get that new person in town. They're not going to have that upfront cost of all those taxes right away, but will eventually get into it and paying the full taxes assets in the other activities and businesses. Another thing is security. While it seems like crime is slowing down a little, it's just a wave, I believe. Crime comes in waves. You get a certain person off the street, and the crimes he was committing on there, there'll be someone in to fill that place, or that person will eventually be released. And having worked in corrections, I know that most everyone that goes to jail and prison do not get rehabilitated, as is the main concept of that. So, they will be locked, and crime will fluctuate again. It would be our best effort to keep our police force strong, keep our officers in this town so we don't have periods where we have one police officer controlling. We need to, if possible, increase our police force. I don't believe four officers is enough to control this town either. There's still plenty of gaps in it, and we need to look at closing those gaps as best as possible. I believe we should move in forward, and continue to move forward, and with new faces and new ideas in town, I believe that's possible. Thank you.
Deb Vanderman.
Hi. I'm concerned about the safety issues in the town. The speed of the traffic runs through, the use of substances that kill our children, war dogs, the dislike of people that are different, and the amount of break-ins or burn downs that we experience. I have great respect for our police force, the dangers they face, and urge the police to knock on the door and not know what's on the other side of that door. I have great respect for the folks that make this town work, from the mayor to the police, the folks at Public Works, those at town hall, the dog catcher and fire rescue. All of these people do their part to make our community function. I want to be part of this team, and I want this community to live on. My name is Deb Vanderman. I have lived in Mount Air for twenty-four years. I have seen people come and go. I have watched the population decline, the schools get smaller, the loss of grocery store, the major burn down in the business district, the Shaffer open and close, open and close, open and close. I've also seen the Shaffer reopen. I've seen the Family Dollar come in, the cleanup of the business district, the new middle high school be built, new playground equipment at the park, and a new park, and events that bring people together, and thank goodness, a wonderful grocery store. I like being able to eat. I want the town to, can you, I want the town to continue to grow. I like the direction our mayor is going, tourism and brand writing, and most importantly, kid-friendly and family-friendly activities. For the past twelve years, I have been the school councillor, K through twelve. I'm the only councillor, and it has been a privilege to work with your children and to work for the school. This year, I will watch the first graders that I started working with in 2008 graduate. And it's really very cool to watch kids grow up and go out into the world. And now, I'm working with the children of the students that I watched graduate throughout the years. I know many of the needs of our community through our children. As a school councillor, I know the importance of being a team player, of teamwork, of hearing everybody's point of view, and working together. I know that most things can be fixed if they're broken, and that most problems can be solved, and it's all through teamwork that we get these things done. I think we all need to be part of the team. There's a place at the table for everyone. We all must give what we can of our time, our energy, our compassion. This is a good community, and it's well worth working for. Thank you.
Aurora Reese.
Y'all know I'm a little afraid of public speaking, so, you know, with the courage, stand up and look at you. That's a lie. But guys, my name is Henry Lopez. I'm a lifelong resident of Mount Air, born and raised here. I want to thank you all for taking the time to come out today, the candidates coming out and speaking. This is stuff that's not easy to come out and present yourself in points of view that are contradictory or even, you know, scary to people. When I look out, when I look out to some of you out there, I see, I see people I grew up around, people I put my knees under their table to eat dinner, some other people I spent the nights in their homes with, your kids of my age. Then there's others that I look at that I coached when they were kids, Little League baseball, all the way to Junior League basketball. I've been real involved, my community, real involved with the town all my life. I look out there, and I see faces. I got Ivan out here, I can see his face. I see Mrs. Sheldon, Richard. There's Larry over there. I see people that I grew up around, and I don't just see voter constituents, I see family out there. And that to me, that to me means a lot. That shows the give, everybody, I think, the confidence to know that when I am representing you, it's out of luck, it's out of being part of the town, part of the community that I feel is going forward. And one of the things that I want to outline for myself is, you know, I've got just very two years of experience on city council now. I've been learning as we go, trying. We participated in New Mexico Municipal League courses, got to do that, learning some governance and learning policy procedures and things of that nature. I won't keep mine political. I agree with everything everybody up here said, as far as making safer streets, police force being stronger, unity in the community, safer schools. There's been things that we all know have happened recently, and those are important to all of us. There's networking in town that we need to do, there's growth, there's prosperity. I think that when we unite together and we have different ideas and people coming to the table with whatever it may be, those are things we need to listen to, we need to try to build on, move forward with. I don't believe in one opinion. I'm not a politician. I'm just a friend, I'm just somebody that's there, and I'm trying, trying to do my best for all of them. For myself, I lived here too, I've got kids. I'm fourth generation Mount Air. I've been here, God, since 1970. I've got, I've got four kids, five grandchildren, they're little amongst you guys, play with yours, you and yours. So, I'll keep mine short and sweet. I appreciate the time you guys have given me by talking to me as a councillor, and I appreciate the support you've given me. And I thank you for your vote come November 5th. Thank you.
Now, we're at the question section of our forum. Each candidate gets two minutes to answer a question. After a minute and thirty seconds, you'll hear a beep just to remind you to keep it brief. I have lots of questions. We'll start with LaShawna, and we'll go to David.
How will you help control the drug issues in our community?
I would help anybody, but I can't help everybody, I have to ask these issues, but it's our police force. We need more, a stronger police force, and we need all of that to make it, to make it better for our town. We have all of that issues with that. We all encounter somebody who works in the UTA, which is a problem with that, so I think that all I can say about it is, is work together, and let them know that we're not going to put up with them in our town, around our children, and get rid of them. And the best way we can do that is to have a strong community and a strong police force.
Deanna.
I suggest like resource officers in the school that would help our kids, you know, with drug problem maybe. Also, just our officers hiring other officers to work strongly together and to, you know, do their job on a daily basis, you know, arrest people, tickets, just everything from, this is a hard question. But just work together as a community and try to, just try and stop what we can.
I strongly believe that it starts not only at home with the parents, but it starts with the community and our schools. Drug prevention programs need to be here. That's one thing that I need to, that we should all focus on, especially with the education center reopening and stuff, having those preventions in place. Also, we need to help those who are on drugs, who have drug problems. Too many times, we push them to the side, but we're not offering them rehabilitation options or a place that they can feel safe to ask for help. That needs to be an idea that we are open to as well.
What's the question, Ken?
How would you help control the drug issues in our community?
Well, policing is, yeah, it's a good deterrent, but opportunity is a better deterrent from using drugs. Sex and drugs is all we offer these kids, sex and drugs is what these kids are going to do. It's just, it's what I was offered, you know, it's what I did. When I was stuck in my own devices, it was the only thing I could resort to when I had nobody else there to help me take care of this town. I do think attacking it at the very base level, I mean, DARE program in schools should just be an automatic. I don't, not too sure what the situation is, we're looking into it a little bit, but I'm not really sure why we don't have DARE teaching these kids that heroin is nasty. You know, that's where I learned that, you know, picking up a needle is a no-no, is DARE program. I had the experience of the STAR boot camp program. It's actually a boot camp that you put in kids. You've got some youth that are using drugs, why don't you put them in boot camp? You have them at school early in the morning, working out like you would if you were a basic trainer. It teaches discipline, and, you know, it gets them thinking for themselves a little bit more there, and it gets consequences for the use. I do think that the Chiefs have been doing a pretty good job as far as attacking the drug products, hitting the warrants and stuff like that. But, you know, there's, you can't just police it. You just police it, and like you thought you were going to mention, they'll disappear for a little while, and then they'll come back, and it'll be the same problems over and over and over again. DARE program, STAR boot camp, the two things I'd be most interested in looking at right now. It's just, you know, it's cheap programs that you can't get here for a small community that can hopefully fix our next generation and not make it worse than what I would say is my current generation is, you know. My generation loves the drugs, man. You know, and they're all over. Dayton, Ohio, the heroin epidemic, there's fifteen bodies a week to the morgue. You know, my little sister has experienced, you know, her best friend, her first boyfriend, and multiple people overdose deaths, you know. It's something I've never experienced because I was taught, you know, heroin's bad. So, education- So, education would be a big thing. Education and responsibility, you know. And responsibility comes from the families, too. And that's all.
I think the drug problem in town would be combated through a combined effort of education, of police enforcement, and also community involvement. How many times has someone seen something laying in the market and they either just decided to throw it away themselves, make sure a kid didn't save themselves, and not record it? How many times does something get found and it's not recorded? If people are constantly recording, finding stuff in the area, maybe the police could look at patrolling that area a little more and see who's there with the drug problems and help that way. How many people have family members that are currently addicted to drugs and aren't constantly trying to help them? You know, it's a group effort, and there's not one way to do it, but it has to be done as a whole. Thank you.
I am myself, I am myself and me, yeah. I know a lot of people who tell me that across the street the drug dealer lives. And I'm sure we could raise hands, and a lot of people would raise their hands. Drugs is a problem or currently a culture. I do commend the schools. I think the schools are doing an excellent job providing education, and I don't, you know, I remember talking to a policeman a few years back, and he said, "I'm the only one here on this ship, and there's no way I'm going to walk into a drug house by myself." And I appreciate that fear. I worry about drugs in my neighborhood. I worry because I don't want somebody who's high coming to me and taking what I have. You know, I have six dogs, I'm lucky. What do we do? I think we have to focus on treatment. There's a million reasons why people do drugs, and all of it is payable. And I can be mad at you for being a drug addict, but the truth is, you're trying to figure out your life and how to be happy. I think treatment is the answer. The schools can't provide the treatment. But I think we're in a community. We need substance abuse counselor program in Mount Air. We have a problem, but I think, yeah, we can fix it. Thank you.
How would you help control the drug issues in this community?
Yeah, I think more police involvement, getting behind our police to help with these issues. As everyone said, that's step one. Our support towards that, you know, is paramount, relating to our helping. And just like everyone else said, community involvement. Don't be afraid to say something. Get yourself involved, make the call. If somebody is seeing something, and if somebody knows you're watching, or someone's watching, they're less likely to try and do something. We have a big problem. You know, it's everywhere, we're far, we see our own. But I believe in community awareness, community involvement, and policing as we're working toward right now. There was internal work in our police department, so it's hard to stay, you know, and I said it's hard to stay on point. But we've got to give them as much support as we can and give each other that same support. That's how I see helping.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, the next question will start with you. Under House Bill 236, the school district is required to utilize local resources. As a council member, how will you entice outside agencies to come into Mount Air and help with things such as mental health and absenteeism?
Can you hear me?
Right up to the...
Can you repeat that one more time?
Yeah, it's a tough one. Under House Bill 236, the school district is required to utilize local resources. As a council member, how would you entice outside agencies to come into Mount Air and help with things such as mental health and absenteeism? In other words, how can you bring in resources that would help the school and the rest of the town?
I know right now, I believe that the school does have something in place to where we do have a lot of absentees. You have to go to teen court, correct? Because my son was one of them. And the reason why is because he was, he missed because he went hunting with the family. So, he wasn't doing anything wrong. It's just, I know that that is also, that was a good place for a kid to go. Also, like again, I said, the resource officers, the DA's office, the PD's, the PD working closely with... There's a lot of resources out there. We just need to go search for them and try to get them involved in our community.
Can you hear me?
Okay, so I think that how we go about doing that is really getting out and being involved ourselves. Like she mentioned, there's a lot of resources. We just got to tap into them, and that takes getting out there, going to the senate, looking for grants, talking to the school, getting involved in as many areas as you can. It really benefits the community, and I think that that's how we can utilize that. But it does take a lot of work from the town and the school, working together and finding those avenues and getting in there and talking and meeting and getting where we need to be.
Question here. As a council member, how will you entice outside agencies to come into Mount Air and help with things such as mental health and absenteeism?
Well, hopefully, the school board members that we vote in would be focusing pretty hardcore on that. I would be interested in basically making Mount Air enticing just with what we have here. There's a history here, there's a charm here, there's an art community here. There's things here that can bring outside funding in. You've just got to find it, you know, be willing to turn over that extra little rock. That was something that I was really good at in wrestling. I owned a wrestling promotion, was told it was dead as a doornail. Had 35 fans a week, and by the end of it, we had 200 fans a week, and I would sell out a 2,000, 3,000-seat building with big shows because it kept, kept taking a bunch of no's to get the one yes. We've got an amazing community here. Mental health is being attacked several different avenues. You can always do more. I might know how to get people to come out here outside of promoting what we have here and trying not to lose what we do have. It bugs me walking down our main strip there and seeing almost every single business have a for sale sign there. You know, what happens if they don't find a buyer for those residences? Chronic absenteeism, you can't fix that unless you fix the issues at home. That's going to start at home. When I missed 26 days from my economic class, because I made all my other classes, but I skipped out on economics. When I missed 26 days, it wasn't nothing that the school could do, nothing the town could have done. You know, it was, it was I had to be at my jobs, and I had to help pay bills, so my control at home, my father would have, you know, couldn't do nothing but support me, you know, because I had to help support him. What we've got, we've got enough to bring people in. We just got to actually get it all together, get everybody working together, promote the heck out of this town. You know, I mean, promote, 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 promote. Get told no, go for it again, do a good yes. You know, just don't be like... Losing hope is something I see a lot of people, a lot of people doing around here and have personal conversations with them. And that's something we, you know, that alone is going to be horrible to anybody's mental health in this town. Attack the adults, and then you can deal with the kids, too.
Thank you.
The increased funding for mental health. There's plenty of grant programs. Grants aren't an easy thing to manage or apply for. It takes a lot of work. I believe if we become more proactive in getting grants, they can eventually pay for themselves. And the more grants you get, the more funding for other stuff. But the more burden, it also puts on city workers. And right now, I don't think they have the staff. It would be feasible with what there is now to look at maybe increasing a part-time position for just grants. I know the county recently moved towards a full-time position for grants, and from what I've seen, it's already paid off. The grants that the county received over the past year, the new grants is, I don't have exact figures, but I'd say at least about double of what they have previously. So, it's a lot of work, but grants bring a lot of money and can help build infrastructure, help build the mental health. And as far as the absentees at school, again, I agree with what's said. It starts at home. You're not going to get that attendance at school when the children have to work to help support their family. You're not going to get that when the parents aren't there to help their children, make sure they're all in school. It's a large effort, and it takes a lot of work to get everything done.
One of the things I do at the school every year is to organize a career day, and then I invite different agencies to come up. And I am always struck by the willingness of people to want to help, to want to plant seeds. Absenteeism, we can say that it starts at home, but home doesn't have the skills, apparently, to help kids get to school. So, we have to take it from a different perspective. We have to approach it differently. So, what is keeping the kids from coming? Why aren't they coming? What was the second one? School absenteeism, Ed?
Here's the question. As a council member, how will you entice outside agencies to come into Mount Air and help with things such as mental health and absenteeism?
Okay, mental health. I am about to retire. I am a licensed professional county counselor. If the school would be able to run insurance, I would be glad to come and volunteer. But there are tons of people. You have resources in your canyon, you have resources in Mount Air. People who would continue to give, they're here. Invite tons of agencies in Albuquerque. Wraith Crisis, Shelter for Victims of Domestic Violence. All of them have grants to reach out to rural communities. We tap into that, we have them coming. It's not an unsolvable problem. It's just reaching out because people are basically good, and I think they want to give.
As a council member, how would you entice outside agencies to come into Mount Air and help with things such as mental health and absenteeism?
I think part of that is, some of what I've learned is, we can network with all kinds of other agencies. But going to Los Angeles, participating in other people's groups to get to know them and help them with what they're doing also entices them to want to now help you. People want to help each other, it's nature. There's groups that we can go sit in there with them, and that brings them to us later. So, it's getting people, outside agencies, to come in and help us with those, with the issues, that's part of it. We can reach out to our, like Sheriff's Department. We can network with them. There's agencies that they're tapped into that they can now help bring in. So, part of it is, just again, networking, going to Los Angeles, going to different conferences, seminars, and reaching into them, I believe. And expressing our needs in town, letting them know who we are, and developing those relationships. Because once you do have a relationship with someone and other entities, they're willing now to come and help you. So, give and take, and that's what I would do.
Yeah, being together with the school, we can work together and see what their resources are, contact their local communities, get together with them, and see what they use as their resources and maybe help these people in the right direction, and that would probably be the best way to go.
Thank you. Okay, now, next question. How do you feel about the current administration? How the current administration is doing? Do you feel the town is making progress?
I do see progress in town, me and me. I see a lot of positive things happening. A lot of people think we're not moving in the right direction. I think we are. It's just taking time to do so. I think that the administration is doing a good job. There's always, in any administration, room for improvements. We need to look at that, we need to move forward. And we need to focus more on our infrastructure and building a solid base for the future out there. But as, you know, I think that you guys have done a great job. I appreciate the work that you guys do for our community.
How do you feel about the current administration? Do you feel that the town is making progress?
I think the town is making progress, yeah. I've only been here six months, so I've only seen a little bit of progress, but, you know, street signs going up and things like that. How do I feel about the current administration? I like all of them individually. I like everybody as a person. Like I said, the reason I ran is because I saw some disinterest, you know, and you can't be disinterested in this. I want four solid years of hard work for the person I vote for. I've seen the town already get it all the way a couple times. You know, we voted down a road project because we didn't like one of the gentlemen that was going to be on that project. Well, that's not the way I operate. If somebody's going to do a good job, and it's going to be for everybody, I have to put personal beefs aside, you know what I mean? I had to, once again, with wrestling, I had to. I had to shake the hand of people I absolutely despised. We gave each other multiple concussions back and forth, but we did shake each other's hands to make each other look good because that was the job, you know. But I do, I like our administration, and I do think progress is being made, and hope continues to be made.
I think the current administration is moving the town forward. There are probably, with anything, a few stumbles here and there, but they seem to recover and continue to move forward. I think there is room for improvement. That's why I'm running, I think I can help with that. But as a whole, I think the county is moving in the right direction.
Do you know? I do like the town's direction. I love that people come for the sunflower, for the carnival. I love that kids have something to do and families are involved, and I want to see it continuing. I think we're going in the right direction. I do not want things to grind to a halt. I do not want to become widder or corona. I want us to keep growing. We are close enough to Berlin, Las Lunas, Albuquerque, Socorro. We are close enough not to be too far away. I think tourism is a wonderful way to sustain our economy and build it, and I can see it building upon itself. I like watching the town grow.
I think the coronavirus is great, you know? But I think that it really is, everybody's working together. Everybody's trying real hard. Mayor's done some great things, council along with him, who's supported all the things he's done, I believe. You see the events that are here, you see the progress we've made. Tourism, like they said, is big. It brings people to our community. We have an ever-growing and strengthening police force. We're always trying to support and grow. So, we're moving in the right direction, we're giving it our best, and there's always room for improvement, like they said. But I like the administration. You know, there's going to be some change, inevitably, but we are moving in the right direction, and we're trying.
Absolutely, I've seen so many powerful things. I've seen the carnival come back. We have a month's of Blue Pies to come. These are things that have come here, and the Blue Pies is huge. I think that's going to be beautiful. The blue's coming, and it's going to be awesome. And we can't fix everything overnight. Everything takes time. I think with the better administration, which we have some really awesome people on the town council that are wanting what's best for our town. And if we get more in there, great. And I think that's just going to make our town flourish even more.
I want to thank Peter Nieto as mayor. I think he's doing a wonderful job. It takes a lot of work every day and a lot of stress because I have been there. I worked for the town government in Estancia. And I know the town employees also. I appreciate all the thank you because without them, we would, it's just hard. We don't realize how much they do on a daily basis and how much stress that we go through. And I think on the town council, you also have a lot of stress. But it's worth it because we're here for our community and I think that we'll be able to change things. And another thing I want to bring up is grant writing. I know Jeremy brought it up earlier, but we do have so much different grant writing, grants that we can go into, infrastructure, NMDOT, the ICIP, and the CDTG. Those will help us tremendously to make our town grow.
Okay, here's a very specific question. Do you feel the wells, the water pumping wells, should have cameras and better fencing? Dive in.
Sure. I was in the security field last in Georgia before we moved out here to an armed security. I don't have any problems with good fencing and good high-definition cameras. Normally, if you do got problems with those, maybe you shouldn't be doing what you're up to that you don't want to be on camera for. But yeah, for something like the wells, which is vital to, you know, I believe vital to our survival. I don't know much about our wells right now, but I do think that having them protected as much as possible would be a good thing, yes.
Yes, I agree that if needed, they should have plenty of security in our wells. That is a very important part of life, our water and now, and it would be a detriment if something happened because of the family that's on it. So having security cameras and fences, if that is needed, there to deter what's going on would be more than something.
Are our wells being fenced? I don't know.
To my knowledge, they're not, but there's concern about the well.
Gosh, I think if they're endangered, they should be protected. But if they're not in danger, are we throwing money away towards something that's not a problem yet? I know that water will one day be an issue for everybody. So I would trust that the town workers would let us know if there's a problem with the wells and then we can proceed from there.
Yeah, I support fencing around our wells and even cameras if it's within the town's budget. You know, these are things that council meets and these are things that we go over, what we have in our budget, what your tax dollars are being spent on. And if it's within reason, if it's affordable to the town, then absolutely, yes.
Absolutely. Our water is an asset to all of us and we really want that compromised. So everyone, I believe, needs to be able to remain, to be something that would compromise any of our health.
I support our wells to be watched over daily. I do also agree that it might be beneficial to one day put fencing or a camera there. But I think as of right now, we need to focus on the infrastructure of our wells. And the ICIP, you know, we had, you know, the copper well improvement, the copper well pump replacement, the wastewater plant improvements, the water system improvements, those kind of things need to be looked at first, I think. Unless there's an absolute need for the fencing and the cameras ASAP. I think that that's something that can be looked at in the future after we start, you know, focusing on getting those wells replaced and such.
The current town council seems to be, quote, anti-cop to this question. When it comes to issues involving their family, would this be your stance? Okay, let's try it again. The current council seems to be anti-cop when it comes to issues involving their family. Would this be your stance? I don't know if we have enough background for this question.
Yeah, I want to know how to answer that. I'm not currently on the council and I don't know how it begins.
I don't think we're going to get it for this particular question. We can say, are you anti-core cop? Yes or no? So I'm sorry for whoever asked that question, but I can't do it justice. Okay, next question. How do you feel about all the events that are going on, but nothing's being done on the infrastructure such as roads, sewers, plants, and wells? So this is a little, this segues with the last question about the upkeep of the well security. Do you feel, let's put it another way, there are a lot of things going on in the town, but are we supporting those activities with sufficient infrastructure? Are you concerned about infrastructure?
Yes, the infrastructure of the town is a major concern, roads, the water systems. I don't believe the events that go on hurt the infrastructure. I think it's only helping by creating more people coming to our community and spending their dollars on our community. Just because someone comes for the carnival and gives the money to the carnival people doesn't mean they're not going to go to the gas station to get gas and stop at all the restaurants and get food from the restaurant. And that just helps the community as a whole. Bringing more people in for more events is only helping. I don't think it hurts the infrastructure. I think it just helps it.
This is when I wish I had attended more meetings. You know, I think the events are awesome. I like that direction. In terms of infrastructure, I think grants need to be written. I guess it's one step at a time, folks. You can't fix everything at once. One step at a time. So I think Peter, you're doing a great job in bringing people in and providing for families and kids to have activities. Now, let's keep that juggling, juggling. The next goal is how do we improve, oh, I've had the sewer back up in my backyard twice in 24 years. But it was a mess. So how do we improve that? Thank you, Mr. Big, for your help with that. And how do we improve water? You know, our pipes are rusting and I know people, oh my gosh, I want the roads paved. And I have to tell you, I love not having paved roads. I love that people can slow down. So it is a process, step by step, and we'll get there. I have no doubt that this town will be able to fix things that are ancient, like the sewer and the water.
How do you feel about all the events that are going on in town? Nothing's being done for the infrastructure such as roads, sewer plant, and wells?
All the events that are going on in town, I believe, are awesome. They do bring people to town. They do bring people out. It do get you to spend your dollars. They do get you to involve yourself with the community. And as far as, if it were true that we were focusing only on that and not on our infrastructure, then that would be a problem. But that is not true. What's going on with us here in town is we just got a, it's been posted on Facebook. We talked about it at the meetings. We just got a grant for $199,500. And for a preliminary study on roads, sidewalks, and drainage. So for the person who wrote the question, if you think that all we are is a party planning committee, then that's disingenuous. That does, again, I support it because it does bring people out. It gets you to the community, it gets you to spend your dollars, and it gets you out there. And again, we pointed out the grant that we got to fix our roads, sidewalks, and drains. So that's where I land on that. We're doing a great job. We're trying. And I hope you guys don't have that, so. Come to the meetings. We'll tell you about it.
I think all of these things have benefited our town from community, raising revenue, like they said. Some things can't be fixed overnight. It's going to take time and with grants and stuff, like Bertie just said, I know that they had just gotten a grant. And I think that that's what they're going to use that money for. I think it's a great thing. So, yeah, the town's old, the pipes are old. We get that, but, you know, with time, everything can be fixed. And hopefully, we can get that done.
Yeah, I believe that our mayor and town clerk are working harder than a lot of people know. It takes a lot of time and effort to do it. But I know that the fun part about all this stuff is that we're getting grocery receipts for our community. So that's huge. And if I get elected, infrastructure will be on the top of my priority.
I can agree with what everybody mostly said here, that the things that they're bringing into town are great for our town, they're great for the community, they're great for our kids, they keep us busy. You know, they bring money into our community, you know. But, you know, infrastructure is a problem. And I think that they're working to address that. I think, like Shayna said, Chana said, it takes time. It takes time and a lot of effort and a lot of coordination with each other and with other entities and outside places.
Well, yeah, they funded, since we've been here, they funded, you know, money for well repairs and they tried to get the road digged, you know, they're working on. They are doing infrastructure stuff too. The fun stuff, the carnivals and festivals, those, in my opinion, are less needed. Like I said earlier, you give these kids only two options. They're going to use those, only two options. So having these little things for them to go do, to occupy their weekend is very good. If they were not focusing on our infrastructure at the same time, I would be concerned. But from what I've seen, they do a pretty good job so far.
Okay, there are no districts for council members. Each one of you would represent the whole town. What are your plans for getting input beyond friends and family from your whole constituency? Is that clear?
Good question. I work at the schools. A lot of people talk to me there. I guess I would have to talk to the town people and find out how best to serve them. I know that there is social media and I know a lot of people in Mount Air don't have social media. And I've gone back to the senior center. That's a really good question. And I would have to think I would have to spend some time problem solving. I, boy. You know, when I heard about this, when Peter talked about the forum, my hope was is that town people would talk about their concerns and what they need and what they want. And I think that's a problem, that a lot of people don't have a voice and don't feel like they have a voice. I don't know. I would have to, I would have to really think about how to get in touch with people who, I don't know. I don't have a good answer. But I think it's a really good question.
There are no districts for council members. Each one of you would represent the whole town. What are your plans for getting input beyond friends and family from your whole constituency?
For me, that's just been what I always do. That's just networking, going out there, you know, handshaking, visiting, talking to people, you know, seeing their concerns and bringing those to council. Constantly inviting people to come to the meetings, you know, is what I do. It's tough. Not everybody has the work schedule that allows them to come in. But if we're not out there trying to talk to people, then we don't know what's happening or what's concerning us. So networking and talking to people is my answer to that question. Going out there and just, you know, doing the footwork.
Oh my gosh, I have a wonderful job. I have to be working with people today. And they tell us their concerns or they tell me what they need. And hopefully, if I get elected, I can meet some of those and work together with the town council and the mayor to fix some of those.
Not on social media, but I believe speaking to the community members. I have enjoyed this whole running for office or council member. Just speaking to the people, you know, just listening to them, being a, hearing what they're having to say, what their needs are. It's been very interesting and I really enjoy doing that. So just being here for them, listening, communicating with our friends and family.
I also have to agree, networking, like Ernest said, communication is a big, is a huge part of working together and getting things done. I do think that you need to, as a council person, have an open form of communication with everybody. Be a person that people can come and talk to and tell, feel comfortable, you know, telling what they want us to be done or what they have a problem with. And they feel comfortable that you're going to listen and actually take it to the board. That's pretty much my answer.
I would just keep doing what I'm doing. We're new here. I've read the Mount Air book. I've, you know, read the town ordinances. I can do all that stuff. But what has let me know that this place needs is talking to all you folks out there. I've given out 373 flyers, which means I've given out 373 surveys. I got three of those surveys back. If you want a voice and a listener to it, anybody can talk to me. You can see me in town just about anywhere. Mustang Diner is one of my favorite places to eat. B Street Deli, I'll be there every Friday night. Shop at the grocery store. I'm all over. I'm at the elementary school. I'm around. Anybody can talk to me anytime they want. I did leave my phone number on my flyers as well. I call his, again, horrible signal out here, but you can call and text me anytime at night. I will answer because I'm Georgia and a little bit nosy, so. But yeah, just doing what I'm doing.
I believe there's many forms of communication and younger generations tend to the social media. And all the ones like, yeah, look someone in the eyes and knock on. I'm acceptable to all. I have social media. I've spoken with members on our current administration through it on issues I've had. I've spoken to current members face to face with issues I've had. And I would be willing to do whatever kind of communication at first wants. If I'm elected, I'll make sure I have email that's public knowledge, a phone number that's public knowledge. And I am always more willing to accept a visitor at my door during decent hours, obviously. But I will listen to any issue you have and address them as best I can.
All right. Here's a very specific question. In the interest of time, I think Mike addressed this briefly, I don't know. How do you feel about parallel parking in town?
Yeah, I think that was a big, right there, a big, right?
I did not like this question.
Yeah.
So parallel parking is like when you park along, sort of parallel to the street as opposed to just pulling in nose first, would like to do.
All right. Well, I'm not for parallel parking. I think if you've been to the meetings, you know that. I like the diagonal parking that we currently do. I'm not for parallel parking. I took the time and went out and talked to the business owners from the business district and a lot of constituents out there. Once I've talked to any of them, one response, they wanted to go to parallel parking. I think we lose too much space. that they wanted to go to parallel parking and think we lose too much space, and think we lose too much parking there. It's just a dish for me, so I don't support it, I'm not for it. Thanks for that question, my love.
I'm against it, I think it's gonna take away from positive businesses, I work at Meds and Power, and the way that we park now keeps it up to ten cars there, I think parallel parking is gonna eliminate that to three. Most people don't know how to parallel park unless our police officers are going to take the time to teach these kids how to parallel park. Then I think it's just gonna be a mistake, it's gonna cause more accidents. I believe that if we want a parallel park or we need a parking spot that everybody's complaining about, and a lot across that firm now, let's make that into a parking place and for the districts, both walking, so people can sit there and handle possible businesses, that might be an alternative, I would think.
I think if we are going for the parallel sidewalks, it's been, for any grants, I know that for a fact, is it's gonna take, to get any grants, we're gonna have to go to parallel parking. I know that in Estancia, where I work, we do parallel park, so I do both here, here and there, so I'm not for it and I'm not against it. If it helps us get the grants, then I will go for it.
Like she stated about the grants, it'd be great to have those grants, but I don't agree with parallel parking for the simple reason that there's just not gonna be enough room. It's gonna cause more of a headache than anything. I do understand that the way we park now is somewhat dangerous, when you're pulling out, you can't really see, when you're stopped at the blinking light, for example, you have to pull way out before you can see cars coming. Those are maybe problems we can address, rather than just changing it up and putting parallel parking, and I just feel like it would be a headache even though the grants are there, and that would be great, so no, I don't really, I agree with that.
On a personal level, I support the parallel parking for the grant money, any money you can bring to the town conference is good, but on a councilman position level, I would be against it. All of our businesses, from the ones I've talked to, are do not plan on parallel parking. And I'm kinda one of those guys that I'm not gonna fight for getting this, and those businesses in town, well, they've got a strong voice in my opinion, so.
I've never really thought about the difference on it, I mean, I've had trouble backing out before with, I'm in my car and there's a big vehicle that comes in right next to me, you can't see, you have to almost back all the way out before you can see, which causes a safety issue. And another issue that I think kinda tied into, well, getting the grant worth maybe putting in that turning area, which is another safety issue now if you turn, I mean, yes, you put your wings on and tell the person behind you, but you're open their hand pension and they don't wanna be hurt. So, I think it should be given as more of a whole town issue looked at, and it doesn't have to be anything more formal than maybe just a simple survey to the town, but see how the whole town feels before you actually put a birth dance on either.
As an owner of a small car, you guys with, you people with those pickup trucks, come on, I can't see past you. But I appreciate the need for the pickup truck. If you, if my vote came down to whether I was for or against parallel parking, I would think it was pretty funny. I am, I, I, it is not hard to parallel park, folks. It really isn't. I can teach you the trick in two minutes, it's not that difficult, and I do think it's safer.
My kind of follow-up to that, it was brought up for grant money, that's already, we just proved that wrong earlier, we've got grant money coming in now, the issue had come up before, so I just wanted to follow up with that. The hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, that does go towards our infrastructure, our groceries, it's not just conducive and tied into that, it hasn't been proven, I know, I know there's emails and go back and forth, but we are getting money, we are gaining grants, so, just wanted to follow up, but I didn't say that to my question.
I think you just cheated. Okay, here's another very specific question. Part of the beauty of living in Mountain Air is the dark night sky, the visibility of the Milky Way. I understand the desire to light the streets and deter crime, but how do we protect our dark night sky? Any thoughts? Do you understand this question?
It's okay, we can drive out of the town. I agree with the lighting in town, I think the businesses need the lighting in town, I mean, they're not lighting down every street, so if you need to see that sky, just put it brighter, as they take a few, two minutes and drive a little bit outside of town and enjoy that.
I agree with the lighting, I, yeah, I don't like the dark town.
I can agree with both. You can drive outside of town if you wanna see the Milky Way, go start, that'd be great, just drive nine to five miles out of town, you'll see it wonderfully, but also, if you don't wanna light, don't put a lighting out. I mean, I think that's a thing that came up recently on Facebook, was why aren't their lights being put up, and we're responsible for lighting out on our yards, unfortunately, so if you don't wanna light your yard, then don't do it, if you do, then go ahead and do that, but we do need lighting, I mean, if you're concerned about your property, I live just right out there, it's very dark, I put up a light, I pay extra for it every month, and I think it helps deter people from my property, so it's beneficial to have lighting in dark areas. At the same time, like, you know, you worry about the talking in our sky, you know, just take a short drive to the quiet, where you can be alone with the sky and the stars.
The one thing I hate about Dayton, Ohio, Detroit, Michigan, about Atlanta, Georgia, about Savannah, Georgia, is light pollution. Absolutely despise that you can't see the stars because of an orange glow, and I personally don't wanna live somewhere that's putting off so much light pollution, you can't see the stars. I do believe having some lights in town, especially a range strip in some of our, some of our other business areas, you know, it's a good idea. I do think we can look into lighting that, you know, avoids that pollution. As far as our personal residences, personal streets, I'm a pro, if you wanna light your stuff up, light it up, but you get away from mine, you know what I mean?
I support the person, personal decision to be able to have a light put by your residence. If you feel you need the light for safety, then that's your personal right, and you pay that extra out here collectively. If you like the dark sky, then that's just the price that some people have to pay to actually live inside the community. There's nothing to force anyone to actually live in the community, they could've lived five miles out there. They could've gone up in the mountains all by themselves, and they still have that option. You can go and visit up there at Red Canyon and see all the stars in the sky, you can't, there's different ways to do it, and I believe the personal choice that if you need light, get the light.
I love the dark skies, I love sitting out on my back porch and looking at the stars. I think that's also a part of the charm of Mountain Air, is being able to see the stars and the attraction of tourism for the citizens, is the night sky, star watching. If you lower those lights, you can cut down on that glare that lights up everything, and, you know, there's these wonderful things called motion activated lights that we could go to, that is what I have, and that works pretty darn well.
I don't think it's a problem, I'm, I don't think others bring it up to, if everybody did have light, then we couldn't see our stars, but I just wanna lighten up like our public parks and schools and businesses, so for that, I would be insubordinate more, but as far as personal preference, that's just everybody's personal preference.
In the interest of time, I'm sort of consolidating two or three questions. Here's a question that's very general, if you get elected, what is your plan to improve our town? Is that a question that you feel you've already answered sufficiently, or?
I think so. I think we, I say yes.
And then, what we have are three questions that are essentially the same. One is general, what do you, what would you do to improve infrastructure, which we've talked about back in a certain extent, such as roads, water, sewer, and gas. Then there's another one that says, how would you address the sad shapes, shape of the restrooms in the Saul Center? So this is, and having me, having just recently visited one. Okay, I did not like this question. So our events are important, bringing more important, I'm sorry, our events are important to bring more people into visit on there, they bring revenue. How then would you address the sad shade of the restrooms in the Saul Center? And this is a center for a lot of activity, of these events.
I think that we could get a lot of people that can come and help get those back in shape, I mean, again, and you're talking about the mission here, right? They're not that bad.
They're getting worse.
Getting worse, and maybe the community can come together and, you know, fix them up, make them look better.
I can agree with her, that people can come together, our community's pretty good at coming together when we need something, but it is important that we start working on upgrading some of the things in this center. This is a very important place, there's weddings here, birthdays, baby showers, a lot of things happen, graduation parties, and it's important that we maintain this place and keep it up to par. The restrooms, yeah, if they got money, let's fix them, if not, let's make a group effort out of it and get the community together to help fix them.
That's a weird question. As a former professional athlete and current custodian at the schools, I would say that I'm more worried about these gym floors than I am the bathrooms in here. I mean, hiring somebody to, does this fall under city work, or how's it fall? If it falls under city work, well, I mean, I feel like, you know, one day we spent in here, we couldn't hurt, or one day after we did, we could hurt, you know, we've got these kind of paper waiting when I have cleanup.
Well, they in the restroom fairly recently, I don't think they're in that out of shape. They could use some minor maintenance. As I said, it shouldn't cost too much, they don't need a major overhaul, but there are other issues within this building, such as, Brad just stated, the floor and the, yeah, the ceiling. It's a little bit chilly in here right now, and it's just gonna get colder, so I'm sure there's less events going on in the winter months due to that, but just as a general, put some money into the building to keep it going and maintain well with the community.
I would think we need a little more. So perhaps what we can do is have a community avenue, I know some plumbers, a little paint job, I would like to see some insulation and a roof, a ceiling, there's so much that can be done, and the community can pitch in. I think guys in the city and town maintenance have a lot to do, but we can all pitch in, like this water fountain over here, that one, they didn't work on.
Right now, the town, if you guys have been to the meetings, the town is already working on appropriating monies for the building itself, there's monies being appropriated for the roof, for the windows, it's already currently being worked on, the mayor has brought it up, and, you know, it's just a matter of time, really, 'cause we voted in as council, we agreed, you know, for the upgrades, so it's all there, it's all coming, it's just a matter of time that it can be done at once, so. That was a good question, 'cause it's already being, it's already on the list to be worked on, and the money's been appropriated, so for everything that's been mentioned, it's already on the list, the bathroom is specific, it will be, it's there, it's just a matter of time.
I think this should be a question to the school board, Mr. Ring, you could have got all your votes right there. I just say, put my aside on all these events, which I'm pretty sure that they're doing anyway to help renovate the building, which that's what most of the students need, those poor people don't realize, that the wet pass to the electricity, to heat it, to cool it, to do all these things, so I would just feel good when that happens, those are the events, is what we need.
I have a follow-up to that. After visiting the restroom, I'm gonna add fancy wallpapers to make it more enticing.
No more follow-ups. Okay, we have two last questions, very closely related, and I'd like to suggest that the way to respond to it is by stating your priority. So the question is, what would you do to improve our infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, gas? And the other question is, our town roads need updates, example, fixing cockpals, improve roads for buses. Can we take this last question as an opportunity for you to state your priority for the infrastructure of this town? Remembering that people appreciate revenue.
So, I would really wish this as my opportunity, and I look at this as an opportunity for all of us, we need to work together and collectively to see things to get done and to make sure that we stay on task. I have heard by going to the city meetings, been talking about fixing our infrastructure and like earning money out for heat, there's funds now appropriated for that and other things. I just really would like to see us come together and become more involved, involved. I go to the city meetings and there's not a huge show. We need more people to go and to voice their opinions, to voice their ideas of how we can make this better. As far as the roads go, it is a problem, I do, that's like the number one concern when talking to people, is they, first thing that comes out of their mouth is the roads, you need road improvement. I think that we can work together to go forward on that issue, but it takes a lot, it takes a lot and it takes time, and it's a group effort, and so I think we all need to do that. I think that there's a lot of priorities for this town, but I wanna hear it from all you guys, I wanna hear from the community, I want them to show up, I wanna hear what their priorities are as a town.
It's basically what my priority would be.
What's your priority for the infrastructure of the town?
It would be self-reliance, especially when it comes to the roads, I want Mountain Air to be able to handle Mountain Air's roads, I don't wanna have to turn to Torrance County, you know, I'd like, you know, some of the other little towns in our county to be hitting us up for some road work, you know, so we can make that money. Self-reliance would be number one, having the right equipment, having, having a properly trained gentleman or ladies on that job, you know, being around to go, I mean. Once you can handle your own business, you can go out and help other people with their business, and then, ta-ching, you make that money, you know.
My personal priorities are not gonna be the same as everyone else's, I mean, the road island runs better, so to me, the road doesn't seem as a big of an issue, is the sewer and water rights. For someone that lives on one of these backroads, it's constantly getting washed out, the road's gonna be their biggest priority. I've, I had to rank them, I would have to get the input from more people, I mean, one person, like I said, one person's needs aren't gonna be the same as the next person.
Yes, I like the idea of getting input from the city workers. My priority, I think, without their input, from what I've seen, would be sewer and water. I've seen the town guys working out in freezing weather, in water, hippy, that seems like a very awful job, so. Um, that seems like a very awful job, so I would like to see that get fixed.
What's your priority in terms of infrastructure improvement in this town?
Well, it's, it's just about continuing to go forward, trying to, trying to get the funding for roads and other things of the nature. One of the things we recently did was talk to Mayor Willard and his, um, his town clerk over there, I think that worked with Dennis. There's, there's certain grants that they apply for, then they get, and it's just about, you gotta constantly, first you gotta put in and get it, then you gotta constantly reapply for it every year, and it's a slow process, 'cause I, I, I'll probably misspeak here, but it's something I'm getting maybe a minimum of sixty-five thousand dollars a year or something, something around there. So it doesn't all happen at once. It's gotta be over the course of time and it's, it's just a slow ride and it's, it's, it's one that you've got to go out and look for the funding, find the appropriate funding, and then also look at what we have with all the costers, 'cause that's your money we're spending. We gotta make sure that budgetary issues meet our town needs and we're not overspending, we're not overshooting for one of the other. We're constantly working on, on upgrading our, our sewer system, our wire system. Um, we have, we have entities that come in and speak at the meetings to those variable issues and the plans are already set forth. We just gotta try to make it happen. It's all about money.
Lack of priorities and prior infrastructure has a lot to do with why things are from the part that they are now. It's gonna take time to fix things and I think that if you just give the people the time to fix what they need to fix, it will get fixed. And the grant money, the people that are willing to help write the grant money, bring those things in so we can fix what needs to be fixed.
I love the word infrastructure here. Um, I would love to get, seek out a full or part-time grant writer. I'm not sure exactly if you guys have one now, but that is my, my goal. I would like to seek out an MDOT road co-op money to improve our streets with our town. Money can help provide the streets that are still dirt to become paved, therefore providing a better quality of life for our citizens. Um, as we people don't love driving on muddy dirt roads, especially in the town, not a street should be paved. Co-ops have a match, but we can, we can and should apply for the match. Ways to see if we can secure a hundred percent grant money. Our, our municipalities apply for and receive money annually. I would like to see if the town is able to get a part of a grant writer. This would help our town clerk and deputy clerk to work on other projects. So, um, yeah, that's it.
Okay, it's time for our concluding statements. This is a closing statement. You have two minutes. If you hear a beep, that means you have thirty seconds left.
I'd like to thank you all for coming out on Saturday. Probably not what you guys wanted to do, but we appreciate you guys listening to us. You may not have all your answers, but we're able to answer them, or I answer them to the best of my ability and honestly. And as I said, whoever doesn't live in Mountain Air has one either way, because everybody has the same concerns, the same issues and the same wants for our town, is to grow and make it better and to become better than it is, so.
First, I wanna thank everyone for coming here today. Today, you heard from each, each of us ready for town council. I am hoping that you had, you got, excuse me, I am hoping that what you got from my answers today is that what I'm here to do is to help Mountain Air move forward. I want to make sure we do all we can to, to work with our seniors, our children, to make sure that they always feel appreciated, wanted and know that we are here to support them. I want to continue to build our relationship with the schools so that we can be beneficial to each other. I want to make sure that we are seeking funding for road improvements, first responders and our police departments, so that we can continue to see improvements. We need to work together and not against each other. Our town has so much potential and I have seen the potential in the last few years. We have, we must continue working hard to improve, improve Mountain Air. If elected, I promise to work with the other members of the town council to make decisions that are right for Mountain Air. I promise to work with the town and Mountain Air employees to sure, to make sure that they feel appreciated and continue to help make the town a great place to work. And most of all, I promise to continue and with, with the, to speak with the residents about issues that concern them. I promise to be your voice of the town on the town council. Thank you all and God bless you. All right, so, um, well, I wanna thank you all for coming here as well, but in conclusion, I wanna elaborate a little bit about the quote that I used throughout my campaign. It's small, but I feel like that makes a whole statement. Alone, we can do so little, but together we can do so much. It was written by Helen Keller. Um, I chose this quote because it resonates with me and, and also with the town and seeing the future for Mountain Air. We have more power than what we even know and united and working together, we can, we can be the change and we can be a movement and we need that. Um, I'm here because I believe in all of us and I believe in the people and I believe in the town and I want to be your voice. I want to also tell everybody online and stuff, like exercise or write a vote. Um, and I appreciate everyone for taking time out of their day to come and, and to hear us, even though there's a lot of questions. Um, and I'm looking forward to working with everybody regardless if I make it on the council or not, I'm still gonna make my presence meaningful, just forward.
Well, thank you all for, for coming out today and thank you guys for the ones that'll watch us here on YouTube. Um, not the most educated up here, not the longest tenured and Mountain Air, um, uh, but what I do offer is, you know, attention to detail and listening here. A vote for me is a vote for yourselves because that's all I know about this town so far. My love goggles are still as big as can be with the town, so the problems I'm seeing in here and a lot of it's coming from what you guys are willing to talk to me about. My whole life, I've spent time making things that were supposed to be impossible happen. And a lot of that's because I won't be outworked. Um, you know, I sleep three, four hours a night, four hours is a good, a good night sleep for me if I do get that much. So I'm up all hours of the day working and, and learning and, and I would like the opportunity to, to do that for the town of Mountain Air. Got some creative approaches that I've seen done throughout the, the whole nation and some that I do think would be very beneficial to our town. Um, I just wanna thank you guys all for coming out and hope you vote for me, comma, November fifth. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone in the audience and the fellow candidates up here to be very informative. Um, there's been a lot of good ideas, a lot of good information given here and no matter who wins, I would hope that whoever does win will use that information to help Mountain Air move forward. It's a slow process, as has been stated numerous times, and we just got to get one step at a time and I would appreciate your support on election day. Thank you.
Elect me and I promise not to be an uninterested council member. I'm not a grand standard. I don't curry favors for my friends. I think solving problems is its own reward. I also see one woman on board. I'd like to see that double. I may not have the biggest signs or the most, but I do have the face. Thanks for waiting. I'd like to work for the town. I'd like to work for you. I love this town and I wanna see it be here for a very long time.
I was gonna go with the big signs, but I just wanted the ones I got. I'd like to thank everybody right now for giving me the opportunity to serve my town and all of you for the last two years. I really appreciate it. It's, it's been an, it's been a learning experience and a great opportunity. Um, yeah, and I feel like that I wanna just continue to be your voice, someone that people can come to and feel that they got a friend in the council. I try to, I try to throw myself in there as much as I can. I, you know, gone for the education that I've gone for and that's only just to learn and do a better job for the town. Um, some people feel like there's bully politics or whatever going on. I don't believe in that either. I, there's a quote that I, that I heard and I don't like it and I think it's, I think we should learn to govern, not by the, not by the example of our power, but learn to govern by the power of our town, you know, so we can always be forward and forward thinking and friendly with each other. We'll grow, we'll, we'll do it if we can work together. Thank you guys and I look forward for your vote on November fifth. Thank you.